Charlie, how are you, buddy?
Pretty good.
Good.
How are you?
Pretty good.
All right, it is 12 o'clock. Want to call the meeting in order, please? For public information, the COP, the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioner's Room, if anybody's interested. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
You all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going too much, I want to welcome John Cannon here from the Executive Director for Dinkle. Appreciate you stopping by. Surprised me. That's okay. I have a motion to approve the agenda. Any changes? I do have one change. I want to add a executive session. And we'll do that right after the Board of Equalization discussion over an undervaluation report, if that's all right with everybody. And that'll be to discuss personnel. Is that all right with everybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll add that to the, yeah.
And you said after the Board of Equal... okay.
Right, we'll come out of Board of Equalization, then have our executive session. If that's agreeable. All right, is there any other changes? We entertain a motion, then, for approval of the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close, please. Do want to remind everybody that we... The Board does reserve the right...
You have five votes.
Thank you. The Board does reserve the right to move into executive session anytime we deem it necessary. First item is under buildings, zoning to clean up the vote on the information that you gave us last time, Bill.
Want me to run through some of this? You just want to take it right off the table, or how you want to do it?
We can just... Does anybody have any concerns? We had the public hearing for it. We closed the public hearing. There wasn't any discussion either for or against. We're at a point now where we either have to accept or reject the proposals that Mr. Mayba is bringing forth. So the first item would be to discuss and consider the Josiah Peterson Aga State Dwelling Site, Section 21 Township 22 North, Range 58, table from June 20th. What's the Board's pleasure?
I would make a motion to accept the Aga State Dwelling Site change as discussed in the previous meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item is discuss and consider the HMF Farms LL Zoning Change Agda Rural Residential and Preliminary Platt Tango Whiskey Uniform Subdivision, Section 30 Township 23 North, Range 55 West, again, table from the June 20th meeting. What's the Board's pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the zoning change as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, recording your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Next item, discuss and consider the approval of the Chairman's signature on the final plat for the Tango Whiskey Uniform Subdivision.
I would move to approve the Chairman's signature on the final plat of Tango Whiskey Uniform Subdivision.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please record your votes.
Who has a second, I'm sorry?
Doesn't matter.
Who was it?
Please record your votes. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Sorry for the next-up wrong. Okay, moving on.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Moving on, discuss and consider the table decision regarding a public hearing from June 20th for budget hearing and summary for the relief medical fund 1500 and HIDTA 2502 from Lisa. Thank you.
The HIDA Fund and the Relief and Aid Fund. None of them are tax-asking. We just need to increase the revenue that was received during this last year to agree to the expenses so I can file for an amended budget.
Okay. I think you gave us all the information on that on the 20th.
Yes, I did.
Okay, what's the Board's pleasure?
I guess I just don't know how to phrase the motion. I would move approval of the...
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment discussed at the previous meeting for the summary... Oh, I'm sorry, for the...
Relief and Aid Fund and the HIDA Fund.
Relief and Medical Fund and the HIDA Fund.
Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please record your votes.
Mark?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item, under General Agenda Items, is a joint discussion of the Scottsfluff County Commissioners and the Airport Authority.
So they need to come to order, right?
We are in session.
We are in session.
So you are legal. While most of you are legal. Couple of you are a little sketchy, but I think for the most part, you're all all right.
Okay. Commissioner Reisig and I met or went to the Airport Authority meeting last Wednesday to discuss the ongoing insurance discussion for the property coverage. The county has extended to the Airport Authority for many, many years. And I was asked a lot of questions about the NERMA coverage and what... how it works the way it does. And I've arranged... We've arranged to have the Airport Authority here along with you. And NERMA represented us. We have Executive Director Craig Nelson in the meeting right now. Can you gentlemen hear me? Oh, I have to call them. I'm sorry.
Let's do that.
Or they have to call me.
I think they hear you, but we need to turn our...
Okay, they were going to call on the conference phone. That's right. It's area code 308. Can you call... If you can hear me, Craig, can you make this call? Okay.
He's asking for the rest of the phone number. Can't hear you.
He's talking to you.
He mouthed it back.
And on the phone, that's Craig Nelson, who's the Executive Director dialing, and Larry Palin, underwriter, will join in the conversation. So hopefully, they will call this phone.
I can see his lips moving, but I don't hear anything. Can you hear us, guys? Wave if you can hear us.
We can hear.
Okay, we can hear... You can hear us, but we can hear you.
We got this muted on this end. Can you unmute that instead of muted?
I was trying to get it up here.
They wanted to call on the conference phone.
We're going to try our WebEx again. I don't know why the phone's not coming through.
They're all plugged in, connected, we'll need to mute.
That seems... Can't wait, just unmute them and just... Is there any sort of...
Okay, you're muted on your end, guys. There you go.
Can you hear us now?
We got you, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, very good. Technology works well when it works.
Well, it is.
Sorry about that.
And you've got to have an expert like our John here to help us out. We get that all done. Thank you for joining us today. Our Board is Charlie Knapper, Mark Harris, I'm Ken Meyer, Mike Blue, and Russ Reisig on the end here. Okay? And then we have the Airport Board sitting down here. Can you see them at all?
We cannot. We can see the Board, and we can see Lisa. We don't see anybody else, but we can hear.
Okay, all right.
So if they have questions, they'll have to come to the mic to ask you directly.
Okay. They'll introduce. All right, go ahead, Lisa.
Well, where... Craig, can you give us the quick synopsis of how... NERMA is... Consists of 93 counties that have basically chosen or put together to self-insure for the county benefits. And that's about as far as I'm going to go with an explanation. So how it came to be, and then we'll discuss some of those other questions I posed to you.
Right, right. Again, my name's Craig Nelson, the Executive Director of NERMA. And as Lisa mentioned, joining me is Larry Pellon, who is our Underwriting and Risk Manager. We've been involved, associated with the NERMA program for a long time. Me since 1994, Larry since 1997. The program itself started in 1988 with 32 counties. Scottsfluff County was not one of the original 32, but joined later in 1988. So was one of the first 39 members. We have 84 county members that are in our program now. The most recent joined Red Willow on May 1st of this year. And then we have 24 other county-related agencies. They have to have a county connection. A number of ag societies are members, but 84 of our member counties. And we provide a variety of coverages to all of our members, including general liability, law enforcement liability, property, auto liability, cyber liability, workers' compensation. So about every exposure that counties face, we provide coverage for our members. So that's a quick synopsis. We're celebrating our 35th anniversary this year, having started in 1988 and having been involved in the NERMA program since, as I've said, 1994. This has been the most challenging renewal for us, primarily because of the property coverage. A lot of... A lot more property claims out there, not just in Nebraska, but around the country, and a lot more severe costly claims. And so that's been our primary challenge with this year's renewal, and it was the primary driver for the cost increases that we saw this year. So we don't have any planned presentation. Our goal was to answer any questions that the County Board might have or the Airport Authority Board might have. I know Larry has been working with Lisa on the issue about the property coverage for the Airport Authority. And we certainly have some claims activity with the airport properties. And those are things, again, that Larry has been working with Lisa at. But we want to, again, be in a position to answer any questions the Boards might have about that coverage.
First question that I've been asked. We are billed once a year, and you don't make adjustments for, like, we added another truck or we added another car. It's a one-time-year thing, and we pay once a year. We are not allowed to pay, like, three installment payments or anything. Or Lisa, I've never asked the question, right? Okay.
Yeah. You've not asked it. This is the first time we've been asked this by a county. The NERMA Board adopted a policy some years ago that we bill this out at the beginning of the year. And Lisa, as you mentioned correctly, during the course of the year, if you add vehicles, delete vehicles, we don't do any kind of supplemental billings or credits. The same with buildings unless it's a building of a higher value, then there may be a supplemental billing associated with that. But the reason we don't do divide the billings up is that we ourselves have to pay a significant sum for the reinsurance coverage that NERMA buys on behalf of all of our members to cover the catastrophic claims. And in fact, we have invoices for that coverage already, and we'll be sending those out this week for the full year. We don't have any opportunity from our reinsurance partners to bill those out in increments. The other thing that we face is that what we bill out in total to our members, about 60% of that is the projected losses that our actuary tells us that they expect our pool as a whole to have over the next year. And those are projected losses. We don't build any contingency factor in it. We don't build any profit margin, any fudge factor. And we just bill out what our actuaries tell us they expect we will have in terms of claims losses during the course of the year. And claims don't come in on a planned basis. We don't get a certain amount of claims each quarter or six months. We could conceivably have a whole host of claims the very first week of our policy coverage year, which begins July 1st. And so those are monies that we collect from our members to pay for claims that arise during the course of the year. Now, with that said, the Board, in its policy, did state that if we do have a member that has cash flow or some short-term issues, we want to work with our members on that, and we have. I don't think we've ever had a request from a county to do that, but we've had... I can give you an example of a small county-related agency this end of the state who receives a significant amount of their funding from the state, and they're unable to pay their full amount on June 30. So what they've asked to do, and which I've agreed and allowed, is they pay one half on June 30, and then they pay the second half by July 30 when they have their funding from the state. And we've been doing that for several years. Again, it's a small agency relying on some state dollars. I think one year, we might have even... There might have been some delay in that receipt of state dollars. We might have had to extend it to August 15. So might have extended it to six weeks or so. But that's... So I have some flexibility to do that if there's a cash flow issue with respect to any member, but that's the policy of the Board and the reason why it was adopted.
Okay. And then I was asked the other day, if we wanted to expose ourself to more risk, can we adjust the deductibles? Because right now, we're going from a building deductible of 500, and it's going to increase to 2,500 this year per year letter. But I've... What you give us is what you give us. But you can explain why we are not given separate options.
Right. And what we didn't include, Lisa, in the mailing this year was some alternative deductibles above the minimum amount you mentioned. We went back and looked. It appears Scottsfluff County has never changed its property deductible. And the property deductibles we've had in place, they've been in place since at least 2007. And Larry thinks we may have had these in place all the way back to 1988 when we began. And so we thought it was time to make a change. If for no other reason than inflation over the last 15 to 30 years, 35 years has certainly changed the value of those deductibles. But we do have alternatives for Scottsfluff County to consider. If you want, instead of a $1,000 deductible, the new minimum on the auto physical damage in your inland marine or your mobile equipment, we have 2,500 and $5,000 deductible options. And then for the building and contents, we have 5,000 and $10,000 deductible options. And we've calculated what those savings would be. And I can tell you what those numbers are. We can email those out to you. We just prepare those upon request of a member, but we would have those available to provide.
Okay. I'd say you'd had some attachments in years past, and I didn't notice it or present it this year. The difference was negligible. We do not... You didn't?
It did... Yeah, it was.
Yeah, we did. We had...
I remember, right? I've been over it before. Yeah.
Okay. We've gone over it before, so...
Yeah.
Okay, that's the questions I knew. Everyone, what questions do you have? You wanted to have clarified?
Neil, would you come up here, please? This would be Neil Smith from the Airport Authority Board.
Yeah, thank you for helping us out. Basically, like everybody else, we're trying to look at cost savings because our airport insurance... We cover our own contents and the liability for the airport. It has gone up from 49,000 to 5,000. So we're experiencing, just like everybody, a drastic increase. And we're wondering where the money's going to come from because people are tired of the taxes. They're just continuing to go up. So is there any other method besides deductibles? Can the airport buildings be separated and maybe have a real significant deductible? You know, like $10,000 or something like that? Do we have any options besides the current deductible and saving very little money by going to a high deductible?
Right. And Larry can weigh in on this, too. We would have a $10,000 deductible option available to the county, and that would apply to all of the properties that would fall under the county's coverage. I know there's been discussions, and not just this year, but in the past, about separating the Airport Authority's operations and property entirely from the counties and having that in essentially two separate... Two separate coverages. We... According to state law, NERMA can only provide coverage to a member of our program. So we cannot provide coverage to a non-member. So if the Airport Authority would be often separate and its own entity, which is one of the discussion points we've been engaged in, we could not provide property coverage to the Airport Authority, again, because they would not be a member. We're providing coverage to the Airport Authority now because the airport, the hangars and other properties are included on the county's property schedule. And as I understand it, do the counties own that, those buildings? My understanding is the county owns those buildings and has the right to insure those buildings. Yep.
Yeah, that was the original agreement that the county, when we set up Airport Authority, is that they were going to cover. But as we're all concerned, we want to... We're on the same team, and we want to try to help each other out if we can, even though I think that the airport insurance is a kind of a small percentage of your overall budget. While our, you know, thousands of dollars increase is going to be a very significant amount of our budget, just what we have now. So anybody else have questions, Matt?
If I could just tag on to what you said. If, for whatever reason, if the county did not own those buildings and they belonged to the Airport Authority, would they be qualified to be covered under NERMA?
They would not. They would have to become a member of our program itself. Without being a member of our program, they could not. And we're restricted by state law. We've gone through this issue with the state, and the state says unless, and we've had it independently reviewed by counsel, we have to be a member to be able to provide coverage. So we could not. And that's what we've tried to do and worked with the county and the Airport Authority over the years to try and be respectful of the agreements between the two entities. But the fact of the matter is, there have been a lot of claims, a lot of losses with Airport Authority buildings that has... Because it's part of the county's coverage, has really driven the county's costs up, too. And we're sensitive to that. Larry, what was your... What was the number in terms of the exposure and the losses?
Well, looking at the exposure, the Airport Authority property is 25% of the overall covered property for Scottsfluff County, 25%. And the last off history for Scottsfluff County, which includes the Airport Authority, it shows that 85% of the county's property losses are associated with the property out at the airport.
Yeah, I realize that. And we've been gifted with a lot of hot water or hard water here lately, too, in the way of soft all-size sales. So we... I don't know whether we... I realize we are a big share of the losses percentage-wise. Questions? Can we exclude some of the buildings like the local gale 19? Yeah. Can we exclude some buildings? Would that help? I mean, I see... I think we have 51 buildings.
Surely, we can exclude...
33. No, we have 33.
But we wouldn't want to exclude them if we're going to own them. We still want insurance coverage, I assume.
Well, but the teehangers are World War II. We've put on some new roofs. We've done some other stuff to it. I'm a real proponent of steel roofs and steel everything because it seems to come through for those even to be existing since World War II. It's kind of a miracle, you know? So maybe they're so old that we should go ahead and consider excluding some. Do we pay premium on a rate per thousand for the airport buildings?
Absolutely. Yeah, the contribution amount is based on the per-thousand-dollar value of the property being covered.
I see. Okay. So what I think you're telling me also is that we could exclude buildings to maybe give a little bit of assistance. Do you know what per thousand that is off that... Off end?
Isn't it that that building contents rate that you calculated, Larry?
Yeah, the rate is 2.52 cents per... Actually, per $100 of value. So I don't have a calculator with me to figure that out. But you have the... The county has the authority, any of our members have the authority, to cover or not cover any specific property. All you need to do is add or delete or change your property schedule to remove property if you don't want to have it covered. That you won't be billed if it's not listed on your property schedule, but you won't have coverage in the event that something happens. But you do have the...
That's something that the Commissioners would have to decide if you wanted to allow us to kind of self-insure some of those.
And that's part of the process I'm doing, like, in January and February, too, is to add and remove properties. So again, the bill now is set for what we got. But we could change next year if that's something we want to...
Which covers all the buildings right now. Okay.
It looks like it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Just go put that here. Any other questions, Matt?
You know, I think the only way that that would work, Neil, and I'm just speaking for myself, is that we could eliminate them from this insurance policy, but then have a memorandum of understanding that if anything happens to them, that it would be up to the Airport Authority to do any repair or replacement of those buildings in the fact that we own them. I mean, somebody needs to take responsibility for them.
We've got to protect the taxpayer.
Yeah, exactly.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Boy, we're caught between a rock and a hard spot. It's very difficult for us to consider raising of our 35,000... No. Our $20,000 increase in insurance. You know? Plus, if you... Whether we're going to decide on what the county wants to do.
Yeah, you know, we got the increase also. And it may be a situation where we have to maybe do some negotiation and see who wants to do what, possibly. And I think we're open to that also.
I would really like to see the comparisons on the $5,000 and $10,000 deductible. Not saying that we'd ever use them, but I would really like to look at them if we could have those at Lisa's.
Yeah.
We will do... Yeah, we will do that. And I'll just verbally tell you what those numbers are, but we'll get this emailed to Lisa. And this is for the building and contents. At $2,500, your current property premium is 307,519. If you go to the 5,000, it would be reduced to 295,000. If you go to the five thousand, it would be reduced to two-hundred-ninety-five-thousand five-twenty-six. So, that's about a, what is it? About a twelve thousand, about a twelve thousand dollar savings. And if you go to ten thousand dollar building and content deductible, it would reduce it to two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-seven, so about a twenty-eight thousand dollar reduction.
On the ten thousand dollar, ten thousand dollar deductible.
Just three claims will pay for it then, basically.
I just had a question. Is this, is this deductible per building or per event?
This is, this is per event. This is an occurrence deductible.
And that is, that's per building, per event?
Per occurrence, I think.
Just per occurrence?
It's a, it's, it's, right. You might have five buildings that get hit by a hailstorm or something. First, we're going to have that, the new wind hail deductible potentially, too. But it's an occurrence deductible, so it'd be ten thousand for any of the buildings that would be involved in that. Ten thousand total.
Okay.
So, I have one other question, Mr. Nelson. So, would the airport authority be a county-related agency? And if they ask to be considered as a member, could they be?
Good question. I would have to see the organizational documents for the airport authority to see if they meet the definition of public agency in state law. The, the Risk Management Act, which creates pools like NERMA, defines specifically what a public agency is. So, I'd have to look at the organizational documents, the statutory documents for the airport authority to see if they meet, if they match that definition. And then that would have to go before the NERMA board for their approval as to whether they would be an acceptable member. The issue we would have on the airport side of things is that we have exclusions from the reinsurance perspective on, on airport operations. And Larry, you might want to touch on that.
What I was going to say, too, is that in order to consider the airport authority for membership, we would have to have that passed and accepted by our reinsurer. I don't think that, we haven't been asked to do that. But at present time, there isn't any insurance coverage for an airport liability exposure in our coverage document or, and so we would have to adjust that and the reinsurer would have to sign off on that. I'm not very optimistic that that would occur, though.
But then the ownership of the buildings would have to be transferred to the airport authority, correct? We, we could not retain ownership of the building and then, and then have them insure buildings that they don't own. Would that, is that a fair statement?
Our charter says we cannot own, own buildings.
Okay.
We can't own anything with an airport authority.
Okay.
So, that would...
So, I, I think I heard you say earlier that if they don't own the building, they can't insure them, as long as they're under ours. Is that correct?
They have to have...
So, we're kind of, we're, we're stuck between that rock and a hard spot that Neil's talking about.
So, it might be just...
You have to have an insur...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Larry.
We, we, the point, we wanted to make you see to have an insurable interest in the property and that with the county owning it, they have an insurable interest in the property.
Right, okay.
Sounds like it might just be a mute point at this time, so...
All right. I, I think we're at a point where we need to do some negotiations and, and decide whatever. It may not be the full premium, maybe a partial premium. If we go to a higher deductible, you know, whatever the case might be, and then split the deductible if there is an occurrence, something. I think there's some, I think there's probably some room for some, for some negotiations. At least not today, anyway, but...
And since the premium is set for this year, I think...
Yeah, I think, I think we've got a year. We've got a year to work, to work it out, guys. I'm, I'm, I'm confident we can come to some kind of conclusion with this.
I hope so. Any other questions over here? I think that'd be smart that we don't make a decision. We probably can't today. And it looks like we need to address some of those buildings that have been there for a long time. We've had a number of hailstorms on them and they don't have any damage to them, all of World War II heavy galvanized metal. Those kind of properties could be eliminated, deducted from insurance. I think that's one idea.
That's an idea.
We've, we've paid insurance for years on them and never replaced a tin on them. It's still nineteen-forties or fifties tin, heavy-duty and...
But I think that's, I think you're right. I think that's something that we need to discuss in, in negotiations and try to come, come up with, come up with a plan that is going to be workable for both, both entities here.
Looks like it's a couple million dollars worth of value in them old buildings, which we're paying a lot of premiums. And so, at two-fifty-two thousand, a couple million, that's, that's five thousand a year right there.
Okay, can I put you in a role?
To me, one of the issues would be, we're not just talking hail damage coverage here. We're talking other damage as well, could be tornado or whatever else.
Fire, whatever, yeah.
And if it wipes the building out, then...
Fire, tornado, earthquake, all of that, certainly. But they would probably withstand the tornado and if they don't, those things are so old and designed for small airplanes that most of the newer airplanes, you can't get them in because the wingspan is too long, so the doors don't open wide enough. They are probably in the next generation, need to be wiped off and new hangar...
And that would be something that would be in, in a new memorandum of understanding addressed.
Yeah.
And, and I think we could do that.
There's seven or eight buildings of that could come out of this package. And increasing the deduct, you know, we can take some risk.
We can't raise the deduct.
For this year, no.
Not this year.
Were you, were you finished with NERMA? I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I know Craig had another meeting at twelve for one-thirty, our time. Are you good?
But...
We can contact you guys if we have any more questions. Thank you for your time and your information.
Appreciate you, thank you.
You bet. We're, yeah, hey, Lisa and board, just, we'll, it's not too late. If you want to choose this deductible, a higher deductible, we will, we, we can accommodate that and adjust your billing accordingly. We just need to know, we'd like to know this week if, if you want that changed. But Lisa, we'll get this emailed out to you so you have the specific numbers in front of you. And if you want to make those deductible changes, we, we, we can accommodate you for this, for this year.
Hey, Craig?
For the rest of the week?
Is it still, is it still too late to pull out any of the buildings of the airport if they choose to pull out some buildings?
Yeah, that, that's going to be more of a challenge.
Okay, okay.
That's going to be more of a...
Let's, let's work on that between now and the next, the next premium. We, we have a lot of talking to do and a lot of, a lot of discussing to do with it. I don't want to be making any, any jump decisions here.
Or else you guys could issue me a refund if we totally made that decision.
I think there's a lot of decisions that need to be made and it's going to take some time to do it.
Thank you, guys, for your time and we will...
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks a bunch.
All right, bye, thanks.
Is John still here?
You'll handle that?
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, but I, I think we need to continue our discussions and we can go with a smaller group, a, 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 a group from here, a group from your board, talk and try to, try to get the numbers worked out. We'll include Lisa with, Lisa with all of that. And I think we, I think we can come to some kind of conclusion. I, I think we know what our boundaries are now, that, that you guys cannot belong to it because you don't own the buildings. We have to keep you on ours in order to keep our, to, to protect our, our investment.
Right.
So, we're...
We probably need to have some discussion with the county, Dana Weber represents the county there, and legal and negotiate within ourselves and you guys, makes sense?
Yeah, I think so. We got some time. We got some time, but we just need to do it. We'll get it done.
Put her on a schedule next month.
That's how we have to do it, is to schedule it out or you just wait?
Yeah.
Next month's going to be a busy month.
Yeah, probably, probably start in August.
That'd be, that'd be good with all the hail damage that everybody is dealing with.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of up to our ears.
I haven't heard anything.
No, we got lucky.
You got, that's why I was thinking, I get a bubble.
It blew my house out and then it didn't do nothing at the airport.
Really? That's, that's good. Very good.
Amazing. I think the county fair.
Guys, thank you, thank you so much. We'll be in touch. We'll set up a, we'll set up a time and, and start some talking, negotiating and trying to get something, something worked out with you.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for coming, guys.
You can stay for my next call. Okay. I do have the State Department of Revenue on the phone because they wanted to join in this over/under valuation report discussion.
Okay.
So, I have Sarah Scott and Ruth Sorenson, I believe, and, oh, that, the other woman, you know her name? There's like three of them. Ruth Sorenson, Mark Loosier, Mark Loosier, Sarah, and one other person on the phone. Do you want, anyway, where are you at on your agenda?
Well, the next one, discuss, consider assessor's office and protest procedures. But I think we can, we'll bypass that one for right now.
Okay.
And, and with that, what I will, for those of you that don't know, our assessor, Angie Dillman, had a medical emergency yesterday, or late yesterday afternoon. And she is at, at the Denver Hospital. Condition, we don't know. So, we're going to hopefully move on. We, we, and we can discuss that as, as we get further here. But anyway, we, our prayers go out to her.
Ruth, are you on? Can you hear me?
So, we, we'll move down to the discuss, consider the over and under valuation report.
I need you to move into the Board of Equalization, please.
Okay, and that's what you said, you had some input regarding the over/under valuations.
Oh, yes. I need a motion to go into Board of Equalization, please.
I make a motion to go into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Are you? Can you hear anybody else?
We are now legal.
Okay to close?
Yes, please.
And you have five guesses?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Yeah. There we go. We can.
Okay, good. Okay, so, what are the questions? I, I, this is Ruth Sorenson, I apologize, Ruth Sorenson, I'm a reporter. I listened to your June twentieth YouTube meeting and I saw what was, or I heard what was being questioned and asked at that meeting. And I was hoping I could clarify a little bit since Ms. Dillman is not available. Would that be okay?
Yes, that'd be fine, yes.
Okay, so you received, I believe it's, I don't, I don't have it, but I believe it's like a two-page report of over-values from the assessor. And know that the assessor cannot change values after March nineteenth. They cannot change values unless the County Board of Equalization or Turk issues an order or the board issues a decision and then the assessor can change those values. So, what is unfortunate about what I was listening to is there was no mention of statute seventy-seven thirteen fifteen point zero one. That is a statute that talks about the over-valued, under-valued report. And what happens is after March nineteenth and before July twenty-fifth, the county assessor provides that report to the board. And the board is to ask on that report. And then, a new notice is sent to those persons or those property owners on that list, giving them a new thirty-day window to protest. They do not have to protest by June thirtieth, as was being discussed. They have thirty days. And so, what would happen is these property owners would file a new protest with a new prior value, new value, and requested value in writing to the clerk for the board to consider. We were talking about perhaps just having them all protest, but how do we ensure that everybody on that two-page list is contacted? We have three days. So, I would recommend approval of an over-valued report, a new notice be sent, opening that window for thirty days. Are there any questions?
What is the other option to, you said she, the assessor can issue an under, over/under report and we can approve it or, and then you said there was another, there said there was another way that we could change values.
Uh, no, there's no other way that you can change the value unless you ensure that everybody on that list filed a protest in three days. And I don't know who you have in the courthouse that will contact all the property owners on that list.
I don't know how many of these actually file protests.
Exactly.
Carrie, do you, Carrie, do you know?
And if there's one or two or three that did not file, you're creating disequilization by not issuing, not approving the over-values, issuing new notices.
So, when we, when you first started explaining the, the over/under report and, and the action that a board has to take, you, you mentioned that there were several ways to change values after March nineteenth.
Uh, no, the, the assessor cannot change values, cannot. The board has to approve the change in value or Turk. After March nineteenth, the assessor's hands are tied. You cannot send protest back to the assessor to change value without your approval.
Did you say we were supposed to be sent a notice, Ruth?
Talking...
I'm sorry?
Did you say we were supposed to be sent a notice prior to that the board was?
If you, no, if you approve that over-value report that was presented to you, if it's re-presented to you, if you approve it, then a County Board of Equalization notice is sent to the property owners on that list, opening up a protest window of thirty days. Not a specific date, but date of the notice, they have thirty days.
And we approved that?
You disapproved it on Monday.
No, you denied it.
Right. But they were sent...
You denied it.
They were sent the little yellow card with the opportunity to protest based on the current valuations.
Based on the value before the assessor found an error. And this is not uncommon. It's not incompetence from the county assessor. It's not uncommon for a county assessor to find that some parts were included that should not, not have been included.
Sure.
We have this in numerous counties. And so, what the county assessors, like I said, statute seventy-seven thirteen fifteen point zero one, authorizes the assessor to come to you, come to the board with this report saying, please help me correct this. I do not want these property owners being valued too high or too low. We all need to pay our fair share.
Get Ruth, one other question.
And so, that's what Ms. Dillman was trying to do, was present this report to you to say yea or nay. If you say nay, then fine. You have to rely on anybody that protests. If you approve it, then they will get a new thirty-day window to protest.
And is this the only one that we can approve? In other words, if, if this board decides to, to do a blanket, and I, I'm not sure if that's the right term, and move everybody back to their 2022 value, is that something this board has the authority to do?
Well, I would not recommend that because there's going to be market characteristics that's going to be changed. Like, I heard you being told that grant values changed. So, we, I would say no to rolling values back. I would rely on the reports from the assessor's office if I, if I can make a suggestion, best practice. Of course, I can't instruct you or, or tell you what you can and cannot do, but I would just say, you have no authority to roll values back. You only have authority to, unless you petition the Turk. You know, you could petition the Turk for a subclass adjustment by July twenty-fifth. And, and Turk would take that into consideration, but you can only consider what the assessor provides to you at this time.
So, that's our only option? Is that what you're telling us, Ruth?
What I'm saying, what, well, the options are, there's two options. What I'm saying, what, well, the options are, there's two options. You can hope that everybody protests us on that list, and if they don't, then you have disequilization. The other option is to ask Carrie to resubmit that overvalued report so that you can approve it, and let's get new notices sent and open up that window of 30 days, so that these property owners' values are adjusted as the county assessor deemed appropriate.
Okay, one of the, one of the, one of the concerns that we had, and, and we understand that, that property values change according to market and according to sales, the, their, sales have been very minimal as far as feedlots are concerned. And, and that seems to be the, the biggest concern in the feedlot owners, at least that's what we're hearing. Now, obviously, we didn't hear from everyone on this list, but we heard from several of the big ones that there have not been any sales of feedlots. So our, our concern is where, where, where we're getting the numbers of the sales in order to justify, and, and some of these increases, Ruth, were, were pretty significant. Some of them were 50, 60, 70% increases, and.
Right.
That was, that was a concern that we were having. That was the reason for my question, is until we can get it straightened out, and, and again, with Angie not being here, if, if, if we went back to the 22 value for, for this year, and then, and then tried to sort it out, that if in fact that we did have a overabundance of sales, and there is some, uh, uh, something that needs to be done, you know, for that, that, I think we're fine with that. But right now, the information that we're receiving is that we haven't had any sales. So the justification, in our opinion, the justification wasn't there to, to do the increases.
Well, remember that we have a state sales file, and the county assessors can query other counties. And they can see what feedlots are signed for. They can look at the soils in your county and make changes like they did, um, they did for grass. So there's, there's other mechanisms that county assessor uses. Um, they don't just rely 100% on sales per se.
Well, wouldn't you, wouldn't you take an average?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, finish, I'm sorry.
We are a sales market approach state, but the county assessors in your surrounding counties, and you may have property owners that own a feedlot that cross over county lines. So you would wanna talk with that county, you would wanna, and the assessor would wanna talk to that county, because you wanna have values that are similar, so they don't get two drastically different valuation notices. But, um, the only thing that I'm aware of is that when this adjustment was made, it should not have been applied to feedlots. And so that's what's trying to be corrected here. So if we correct it back, reduce the 35% back, then the new feedlot, then these feedlot owners can protest that new value, and if you still feel that's too high, that's up to the board's, board's discretion as to whether you want to lower that further. But it would be on a protest-by-protest basis.
Well, some of this real estate, or the feedlots went up 70%, and some did go up 35, some went up 20. They're, they're just a array. I don't know how you can take averages from other counties and, and have that wide of a brush to paint with.
Well, um, we have to do that with statewide equalization, um, we being my, my team. Also, it's my understanding, when, when we went through statewide equalization, there were improvements on some of these feedlots, or other properties that increased the value. I don't have the list, like I indicated, to tell you 100%, but it sounds like some of the improvements changed, and so that would increase value. And you, so you don't wanna take those improvement value off and go back to 2022. You want to have the values as correct as possible and equalized so that you have the value in your county for schools and et cetera, et cetera. Um, that's what I'm saying here, is take that into consideration, if you would, to reconsider that report.
Um, Ruth, this is Mark, um, so.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, if this, um, if we rolled back the 35% as this is suggesting, this over/under value report, then I think the new information that we didn't really understand the other night, the new information is, is that it gives them 30 days additional time to protest based on what it got rolled back to.
Correct.
All right, so that, I think, was new information, because we were concerned a little bit even then about timing, and whether or not they would, um, get their notices soon enough to know what was going on.
Right.
So that could be it, and then, there was.
Yeah, I, I listened to that conversation, I was so wishing I could be there.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, they get a new 30 days. Um, I would just indicate on any currently filed protest that a new board notice is being sent and a new protest should be filed.
Okay.
And don't act on that filed protest, the current filed protest, because if they have killed the Turk and Turk sees the date, and the difference is in the value, Turk is not going to act on that. So you wanna look through the whole due process for your property owners.
So, yeah, they would definitely need to file a new protest based on the new amount.
Yeah, within 30 days after you send notice.
And you said you watched the, our meeting. I can't remember exactly the reason why some of the commissioners felt that we might be backing ourselves into a corner in approving this 35% rollback. Do you remember what that, what that discussion was about?
Well, they were thinking that you could send it all back down to the assessor's office to make the corrections, and that's not statutory authorized. The county, like I said, the county assessor cannot change values after March 19th without your approval. So my understanding was they thought it would be, you're being backed into the corner because it, they were unfortunately included in the 35% increase, and now we're trying to take that off. And they felt that that would not bring the value to where it should be.
That possibly it should be more.
And it may or may not, because like I indicated, there are some changes in improvements, and there's changes in the grass values, and there's changes in other characteristics. So that is what my understanding was. Um, I don't, is the commissioner there that had that concern? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if there's in the room.
Hey Ruth, this is Charlie Knapper.
Hi.
Hey, thanks for joining us today. Um, I think, well, I remembered from the, from the meeting on Monday that we were, we didn't wanna approve that over/under valuation report because we wanted it, we didn't feel it was accurate, and we wanted a new over/under valuation report. And, and we, we thought if we approved the one at 35%, then we would kinda be pigeonholed into that, but we, we did believe that there needed to be, uh, we just, we didn't feel like 35% was the correct number. Um, so what we wanted to do was get a new report, uh, to approve. Um, and, you know, now we're in a situation where, um, we probably won't be receiving a, a different or amended over/under value report. Is that?
Well, what, currently, all right, so you did feel it was the correct reduction or correct percentage. So what I have experienced in other counties is the board approves these overvalued/undervalued reports, which, again, they, it's not unusual or uncommon. And then a new notice is sent, the property owner will come in with a protest within 30 days, and at that time, you, the county board members, have discretion to change that value further. Either increase it back or decrease it, whatever you deem fit based on the evidence provided by the property owner. The situation I have here now, okay, well, we'll talk about that, um, as far as who can present that report at this time.
Well, one of the, Ruth, this is Kenmeyer. Ruth, one, one of the concerns I, I know that we had was, uh, but, two of the concerns were, and you'd mentioned it was improvements on, on a feedlot, uh, or, or sales. Uh, and, and some of the, the folks that I have visited with, and I'm not speaking for everybody, had indicated that there were no improvements made on their property, and that there weren't any sales either. And they still, even with this over and under report, were still getting significant increases with it. Uh, and, and that was, that was the concern that, that I was having with, with approving this, this particular report. So they were still gonna come back and protest it anyway, um, because of.
Well, sure.
But, you know, again, and, and that was our concern too, is, is, is the, the lack of the sales and the lack of improvement. We need to have something to justify that, and we weren't getting the justification.
Ruth.
I understand, I, I hear you. Um, remember improvements, um, is sometimes buildings on the properties need to increase based on similar buildings in the, in the county. So when we talk, talk about improvements, it's not just that you, you added a new shed, or you added a new barn, or you added a new silo, or you added anything new. It could be just that that building changed based on other buildings in the county. Okay, based on Marshall Swift, costing updates, et cetera. So, um, we need to compare buildings similarly in the county. And again, the property owner has the right to come into the board for a protest hearing and present evidence. And you, the board, have the ability to listen to that evidence and make a further reduction if you feel it's still too high, based on what the property owner has provided.
Ruth, Russ Rize.
You have that authority.
This is Russ Rize here. Ruth, what, uh, what about depreciation on these buildings? I, I don't know if any depreciation on this has been taken into account. All we seem to do is raise everything. We don't ever depreciate, that I can tell. I mean, some of these buildings are, look around, these feedlots, these buildings aren't, they're not in really good shape. There's gotta be some depreciation.
Yeah, that, that would be a question that I would have to have. I know Mark Luister's in the room and is helping us here today. Uh, we would have to look at the depreciation schedule and the Kama system. Also mitts will have it back. Um, if there's to be more depreciation, that's something that the county assessor should be looking at.
Right.
Again, I don't have the property IPs or anything to look at for you at this point, but depreciation is, should be accounted for.
I agree.
Obsolescence, functionality, et cetera, et cetera.
I think.
So, um.
What about some of these buildings that are 30 years old?
When you have a protest, in fact, when you have a protest in front of you, have the, have the assessor's office or whoever is representing the assessor's office provide the property record cards, or you may have it on your, your laptops, your computers, that you can look at for depreciation. Should it be higher than what it is based on the condition of the building?
According to the federal depreciation, or your federal income tax, your depreciation runs out in 33 years. I mean, is, don't these buildings depreciate down in 33 years?
Uh, no, we don't follow the federal. Um, this is a, we're a mass appraisal. That is personal property that you're referring to. We depreciate personal property, but not real property.
Carrie.
Based on federal guidelines.
How, how many protests are we getting on the feedlots? Do you have any kind of number? Three are the only ones that are protesting? Okay.
Is there any way, um, based on the current situation, that you could bring back that report that was offered in June and act on that differently?
I think.
On June 20th, I'm sorry.
Ruth, I think you need to know that, um, we have on the agenda today, discuss and consider the over/under valuation report, and in our packet was included that same report with the same information, and so I believe it's on the agenda today.
Oh, okay. I saw it on the agenda, but I didn't know the report was back. Okay.
Yeah, we have a copy of the report with us, and it came with our packet, the two-page report.
Okay, good.
So I think we have it on the agenda now, and so my, a couple things, and that's that the issues of whether or not they added buildings or not, whether or not depreciation has been considered or not, whether or not all kinds of things have been considered or not on that individual property is one thing. But this is a 35% reduction because we made a mistake. And we can take 35% off, we can send a notice to these property owners, give them 30 days more to file their protest, and to me, I cannot see why we would not do that. I don't see any downside potential for the customer or for us. And so why we wouldn't approve that today, I do not know, but I'm, I'm interested in hearing whatever the others have to say.
The only thing I'd like to see them do is take the 35% that they added on and take that number back off, not take this off the high number, because it'll back us lower than where we were originally.
Mr. Wright, this is all we have to act on today. I mean, we're not gonna be able to fit another meeting together.
We've gotta take off the right 35% that we can't take off the wrong 35%. That's not gonna fly.
The 35% is off of the higher value, the 2023 value.
You can't take it off of that.
That's where it's coming off of, though.
You can't take it off of it. You've gotta take it off of last year, whatever you added on, you need to take that number off, because if you.
Well, that, no, that's, that's, that's just what I said. I said, the, the 2023 value, if I'm looking at the first one, is 1,084. The recommendation is 8, uh, 863 of change of 730,000.
Aren't we doing 22 taxes right now? We're a year in a year, right?
Yeah, but that's, but that's where the 35% is going to come from, is off of, off of the 2023 value, off the cards that went out. They're gonna back those off 35%.
You can't do that, because you put 35 on it.
That's what they're, that's what this is saying, though.
You're gonna take 35% off of the 35% you put on, you're just gonna make it a whole different.
So I would, I just wanna throw this out there. I was in the assessor's office this morning, and, um, just to say hello, and, um, there were some, uh, findings in there that showed a lagoon that was depreciated down to like 92% on last year's taxes. And then it was, on this year's taxes, it was only depreciated like 20%, 22%, something like that. So where, we have a, we have a myriad of issues, not just the 35% increase applied in error. We've got depreciation issues that have been going the wrong direction from '22 to '23. How does, how does something, um, how does a lagoon, how does a lagoon's depreciation, uh, go backwards? Um, so we have, we have a myriad of, of issues that, that is beyond this 35% uh, applied in error.
Well, if I may, um, I don't know if the lagoon property is on this list, so I don't, I'm not sure how that's coming into play, but I hope that property owner protests. They won't, because, I don't know, maybe they will, maybe they won't. However, um, my understanding from my team being in that office is there was an update to the Kama system costing tables, Kama system calculations, and in 2020, this board reduced those values. And as Carrie indicated, they're rolled every year. So you're gonna get a new calculation every year. And I don't know if Mark Luister's there to comment on that, he sure could, but before he does, all that we can act on today, we, you, the board, is the report in front of you. And then you can act on any protest that becomes, comes before you. And it, and it can be approved, and, um, the values can be changed, the property owners can, um, get the values that they. can, um, get the values that they desire. If they don't desire those values, then they can go to Turk. And we can look at this and fix it all next year, but right now, we're down to the end of June. So, of course, the undervalued/overvalued can be filed with you until July 25th. So there's no rush on approving that report, but if you have it in your packet to approve, then that's your option to approve. Um, Mark, do you have comments on anything on those tables that were updated and the reduction of value in 2020?
He's coming to the microphone.
Yes, yes, Ruth, I do. I've kinda done just a brief...
Okay, thank you.
Pardon?
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, Carrie and I have just kind of done some preliminary research on each one of these. We started from the top of the list and looked, and then especially at, uh, is it Mr. Chandler's property? Uh, that was the one with the lagoon. Yeah, why it was originally, and why a poly-lined lagoon was down at 12% several years ago, I don't know. But yes, when the re-costing of improvements was changed, uh, that did change the depreciation. That, that is true. And it does seem to be with the improvements. If we're talking about the 35%, it was the improvements, not based on sales, but based on, uh, running a new cost index for, as you know, uh, outbuildings on, on farm property i- is priced with the Marshall Swift commercial, uh, cost book. And that's where that is taken from. And yes, there are things that, yeah, the 35% isn't gonna cut it, but these people are given the opportunity then to protest and then to find out what, you know, really should be eliminated. But it wasn't, you know, that the ground itself was, was, was changed or anything. It was, it was the improvements that were, uh, rolled in a new cost index, is what it appears like right now from my preliminary, uh, research.
Thank you, Mark. And again, we hope that that property owner protests, or, or at least, um, it can be reviewed for next year, if they did not protest.
They did.
But again, again, we do mass appraisal. We don't look at parcel by parcel, which makes it a little bit different from how I'm hearing the board looking at parcel by parcel. So, um, again, I don't know how you wanna act on that overvalued report, but I just wanted to give you the legal advice that I did not hear provided to the board on Monday.
Got a question. So Ruth, this is Mark again. I just want to say that, so several of us are here taking these numbers on this, um, over and under report, multiplying times 35%. It's not coming out, whether it's figured on the 23 value or the pri- or the prior value. But of course, what I'm understanding is because, again, they may have had adjustments for other things.
Well, it is my understanding, it looks like, now Carrie can correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like Angie wanting to treat everybody fairly had rolled back every feedlot 35% regardless of the 2023 value, and that is why you see, from what I have seen so far, the discrepancy between some not being enough with the 35 and some going under what they would have been on the 2022. That is what I have seen with some of those that I have viewed today.
But even doing that, I'm...
And thank you, Mark. Uh, Commissioner, did you have a question for me, or did that answer it?
Well, I think the, the point that I'm still seeing is that what we, we're gonna call it a 35% reduction because we had a 35% increase in error. And so based upon that, I'm going to assume that these numbers basically reflect that less or mi- minus or plus any adjustments that were made otherwise for things like depreciation, things like additional outbuildings built, or any other thing that could have affected the value of the property. I'm only gonna say this again for my fellow commissioners. This is the best way that we have to reduce their values by approximately 35%. That's not exactly 35 all the way through, but approximately 35% for our constituents. Then, as we would with any residential property or any of these properties, if they're still not happy with their assessment, they would come to us at tax protest time. Then we're able to deal with these things that we're talking about, depreciation, or a, um, uh, reservoir at a feedlot, or, uh, outbuildings that may have been built or tore down, or whatever the case, that has to be dealt with on a property-by-property basis and can't be dealt with in a mass over and under report like this is, I believe.
I would totally 100% agree with you, Commissioner.
Okay, and I...
Thank you.
I still cannot see why we would not give this amount back to our constituents. Again, I see no downside potential of this for us or for them. Um, if there is, I'm interested, but I'm not seeing that, and, and because of that, I, I think we ought to approve this, this report.
Ruth, this is Charlie Knapper again. You had mentioned, you had mentioned a few minutes ago that we could discuss who might be able to issue, uh, a different over/under value report while the assessor is, uh, currently out. Is that something you wanna discuss in here, or, or in a executive session, or, um...
Well, well, you know, it sounds like the overvalued/undervalued report issued by Ms. Stillman is in your packet, so that is still, well, you denied it, but I, I would think if it's in your packet, you could act on it in a different way. Uh, it's hard for me to advise on that. I wish your county attorney was in the room, but, um...
He is.
Perhaps, oh, hello.
He is.
Perhaps there can be a motion to, um...
Reconsider?
Reverse the prior decision? If that's what, if the board wants to do that? And then proceed with this report without that motion on June 20th? What do you think?
I think that's appropriate.
Okay. That's, that's, again, up to, you know, I, I can't advise legally, um, but that is what could perhaps happen, is that the prior vote is, um, mute, removed, is reversed. However, you wanna raise the motion?
I would.
And then proceed with at least giving these property owners 30 more days to look at the value and see, did they in fact have a change in an improvement of building? Um, and is the new value correct?
Correct me if I'm wrong, can, uh, that be only brought up by somebody who voted in favor of that motion? If you vote, if you voted against that motion, I don't believe that you can bring it up again to be, hold on.
I don't remember who voted.
I think everybody voted against it.
That is correct. I have the minutes downstairs. Do you need me to go get them?
I think, I think you're right.
Is Carrie there in the room?
We'll all vote the same. It needs to be somebody who voted for it that can bring it up.
Could she perhaps reoffer the report?
Excuse me? Excuse me, what'd you say, Ruth?
Could you perhaps reoffer that report at this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That, that may be helpful, just reoffer the overvalued/undervalued report based on Ms. Stillman's signature.
Yes, we can reoffer that.
And, um, reoffer and, and then the, perhaps, I don't know. I'll let the county attorney advise on that. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead and reoffer it.
I'd like to reoffer that, um, the over and under report, again, to set it back up to what we decided at 35%, put the values back like we talked about the first time.
I need a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the new over/under value report as presented today.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I just, I just don't know if this is, um, I understand what we're doing, um, you know, for the, um, feedlot owners here. Um, I have no problem with, with, you know, voting in favor of this. Um, how, I guess my concern is that, um, you know, these, these feedlot owners have, um, come together to, to make us aware of this, um, you know, as have hundreds of other property valuation protesters, um, over the past couple weeks without the, um, you know, and all they've been given is, um, a hearing date or, or, uh, you know, save the date on their calendar. Um, and I believe that, um, we're gonna end up, um, unequal here, treating, treating property owners unequally, where we have, um, like I said, a myriad of, of issues across the county for all types of property owners, um, not just feedlot owners. And I don't, I don't want to neglect or treat any other, uh, property owners unfairly or, um, you know, or not equally. Um, I believe there's more to discuss before we take this action, and, and I don't want this to be the only action we take. Um, I think we need, I, I would like to go into executive session, uh, just to, uh, protect, um, the reputation of, of county employees, um, and, and go, go into further discussion.
Before we vote?
Before we vote.
Is it...
We, we can come back and address it after the executive session. I, I have no problem with that.
Well, I, I disagree. I think we're giving the property owners an opportunity of another 30 days to gather evidence to support their, uh, evaluations. Uh, and I think that's more than fair, because we can drag this out and drag this out and accomplish absolutely nothing. Uh, I, I agree with, uh, approving this, and like I said, allowing the customers another 30 days to gather the evidence they need to support their claims on the value of their property, and I think that's more than fair.
I, and, and I would vote for it also, if it were working out, but I, the, the numbers that I'm running do not come to 35%. I'm sorry. And, and we still have some, even after 35%, we still have significant increases wi- with some of these properties. And I haven't run all of them, uh, the ones that I've been contacted with. So I don't know whether this is the, the fix-all for it or not. I'm not disagreeing with you, Mark, other than the fact that I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that this is the answer.
I don't think it's the fix-all.
Yeah.
The fix-all is when they come and protest at protest time. That's the fix-all.
We can fix each.
Then we can look at an individual property with individual situations, just like we do for everyone else. And that's, um, what we've, what we're doing here, in my opinion, is the assessor has said they inadvertently made a mistake, and they're asking us to correct it. That's as simple as it is, right there. And then we're adding in all of the other stuff that we disagree with, with, with the basic appraisal process and a whole lot of other things. But this is simply her office saying, we made a mistake, we need to correct it. And they're asking us, they can't do it on their own, they're asking us to do that.
Carrie, can I ask you a question? How many of these properties were inspected?
Uh, Angie went out and did all commercial and feedlot area.
So every, so...
Was there any, or all commercial?
So every, so every feedlot was looked at?
I don't know about every feedlot in how many years, because I can't...
I'm talking about this year.
No, not every feedlot, but I know a lot of commercial.
Okay, I'm not talking about commercial, I'm just talking about these right here.
I don't know exactly. I have to look on the paperwork ourselves and the computer.
Okay, so we don't know whether, we don't know whether all of them were, were, were looked at, okay?
I can tell you what has been looked at and what happened by our records.
Can we, can we, can we do that this afternoon? Can we bring this up on the, 'cause I, I think what we're gonna find is that these weren't looked at. And that's, I, I would strongly recommend we go into...
Yeah, and, and we, and we need to, and, and we will. Uh, I, I wanted to get any other questions publicly that...
I have a question about what you talked about earlier. Aren't, aren't these values set by head, head count, or, or unlined footage? These values original?
I, I, I don't know what method was used, Russ, I can't tell you.
That's what we talked about when Ryan was here.
I, I, I don't know that that was used this year. I, I don't have a clue.
I think, I think what we heard from last meeting was that that's what it used to be, but apparently there was deviation from that this year.
Yeah, it's something different. I'm not, I'm not sure what was used. That's, that's, that's my, do you know, Carrie, what was used to come up with these numbers?
Well, they did the Marshall Swift updates, and they rolled them, and there was a, that's why we're here, is because of the 35%. The Marshall Swift update for commercial was updated from, uh, I think it was 2014 to '20.
Okay.
Can I, can I just ask a quick, quick question while it's on the top of my head? Ruth, and maybe you could help answer this one, but if, if the Marshall Swift is, is updated or shows we need to increase, you know, replacement cost, what, why does that require a change in the depreciation? So if something's still 92 per, or 92% depreciated, we've still got, you know, we're still taxing it at 12%. Um, shouldn't that, shouldn't that 12% just be increased to sho- to show what the, what the current replacement value is, or, um, why are we changing the depreciation piece of it?
Mark, can you, you wanna address that?
I haven't seen their specific depreciation tables, so I really can't...
Okay, that's fair. Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
But does, does my question make sense?
Yeah.
Is Ruth with us anymore?
I think she is. Ruth, you still on?
And Commissioner, this is Ruth, yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, okay.
Um, it's possible it was over-depreciated before. Um, I don't know, again, I don't have the property parcel by parcel, um, but we need to take a look at that. And Marshall Swift will update the costing based on the current economic conditions. I mean, as you know, we're in inflationary times, and so perhaps somewhere lower, or perhaps they weren't. I, I just don't know right now. Um, we don't know if the 92% was correct before, but we will come into the office and we will help and we will look into all of that.
I would like...
And Sarah, do you have any thoughts on this?
Uh, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I would agree.
Oh, sorry. Good.
Okay, it's, it's really hard to say based on what it was and what it is, what is right. And we can help dig into that and figure it out and answer those questions, but I can't, we can't do it now. Like, it would take some research, but we, we're more than happy to, uh, do that and to answer any specific questions that exist.
Okay, but I, I think we do need to move, I, I wanna, I do wanna go into executive, we have some other items that need to be discussed, and, and this is, this is part of that discussion also. Uh, but I, uh, do you want, do we, have anybody here with any public comments before we go into public?
This is Ruth.
Yes, Ruth.
This is Ruth, I'm sorry. If I may, the board can only act on the report before it right now.
Right.
If you want to discuss commercial properties, residential properties, that is a petition to Turk by July 25th.
Okay, we understand that.
But again, it's, it's up to you if you want to go into executive session to discuss it. I just wanted to make sure that's on the record.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that, Ruth. We'll, we'll probably be giving you a call here again in a little bit.
And...
Okay.
Let me ask, let me ask one other thing, and Ruth, maybe you want to stay on for this, but the question has been asked, how many of these properties were individually inspected? And there may have been some, maybe not. Again, the assessor's office is saying, "We accidentally added thirty-five percent, we need to take thirty-five percent off." Seems like a fairly cut and dried thing.
The accidental percentage increase is in the camera system on how it's coded.
Right.
As far as which were individually inspected.
Right.
The county assessor has the ability to inspect through telemetry, drone, whatever is used in the county.
Right.
And the mapping department helps with that. But they inspect properties every six years. And I'm not sure where the feedlots fit into that six-year inspection review cycle.
Right, and my, my bigger point to that, and really what I was trying to emphasize is the fact that, I don't know how many parcels we have, wasn't it twenty thousand or something like?
Twenty-two plus.
Twenty-two thousand parcels, and the...
Oh, yeah.
We only inspect a, I guess, one-sixth of that amount every year, and that may certainly not, may not be a personal walk-on-the-site inspection. My point is, there, this, this is coming back to us because they said they made a mistake. They accidentally applied thirty-five percent, they would like to take that off. And to me, that, that thirty-five percent, we ought to be able to vote on that. We're not gonna go over every individual parcel here today. We couldn't, even if we had time, that's not what we can do legally, the way I understand it. And so I'm just thinking that, that we should approve the thirty-five percent and encourage anyone, as we do with any properties, anyone that still believes their value is incorrect, to protest just like they would have otherwise, or could have otherwise. And it simply, in my opinion, gives the constituent the best of both possible worlds if we do that.
Okay.
Right, and, and I talked with Mark earlier, Mark Luce earlier, and he and Carrie were going through each of the properties to see what changed, and so that information can be provided to you when a new hearing is scheduled for these property owners. And you would have more detailed information. But again, the protests that have been filed now before June thirtieth on these properties should be just indicated that the hearing is continued until such time as a new protest is filed. And then when that new protest is filed, then you can get more detailed information from the county assessor's office, which we will help you to compile and proceed from there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ruth. Before we move into executive session, I do want to ask if there's any public comment.
We have, we have a motion.
We have a motion in a second.
We have, oh, we do, we do, don't we?
Do we want to change that motion to what you discussed? I mean, have we discussed that after the motion on dissolving this other?
I think that was all in one motion, to rescind and then now approve the new.
Is it all?
Is that... I thought that was all in one motion.
Just so we got it right.
Okay.
A lot of stuff's happened here.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion to approve this report. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we have a second to approve this report?
Yes.
And we're in the discussion mode?
Yes.
Charlie, you requested that you wanted to, to discuss this further in executive session. Is that correct?
No, I'm good with, as long as we, we can, we can finish the action on this, on this item, and then, and then move into...
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna change anything.
All right. Is there any other discussion on it? No other discussion? Record your votes.
A yes vote approves this report.
Yes.
Okay to close?
Yes.
You have five yells, those?
Okay. So with that, then, I would ask if there's any public comments at this particular time.
I need you to leave the Board of Equalization.
I need a motion to...
I will move to leave Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Now, I will ask for public comments. John, do you have anything to add? You're our guest today, and...
I need Russ and Ken to vote, please.
I just did.
I did, I did too.
Okay, close?
Yes. John, do you have anything?
You have five yells, those?
Thanks, Ken, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with the board. You know, there's not much I can add, really, and I think the property tax administrator pretty ably kind of outlined for you what your, what your options are. The thing about doing an over-value, over-value report is, it is, to your point, Charlie, it's a blunt instrument, but what that allows you to do is, it allows the property owner to have, not quite a second by the, by the hour, but they've got an extra thirty days, where they can bring forward any further information to get that more precise result that you're going for. So I, you know, generally speaking, if you guys took a vote, it was five oh, I think that was probably the right result for your taxpayers. You know, as far as what other things you want to do, I, I think that's, that's the second conversation that you're about to have, but, you know, I could not agree more with, with the property tax administrator, with Sarah Scott, and what Mark Luce had to say. I think they've given you some pretty good advice here.
Okay, very good. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, also. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion that we move to executive session to discuss personnel. In that meeting will be the board, Lisa. We were gonna have Mark, and, yeah, county attorney, and was Mark Luce gonna be part of that? Not, not at this point?
I would ask, I would ask that Mark be included, Mark Luce be included, please.
We can bring him in as needed.
We can bring him in as needed. We're gonna have a discussion first, and then we can bring him in.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I, I would also like to add Gene Bauer as needed.
Okay.
So will someone call us when you want us to join?
Yes, please. Yes, we will.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I entertain a motion to move into executive session at whatever time it is here.
I have one-thirty-eight.
One-thirty-eight?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I want to confirm, it's Lisa, Dave, Gene is needed, and Mark is needed.
Mark is needed.
And then Ruth via telephone as needed.
Okay.
And I'll have to do a verbal roll call, I wasn't ready for this.
That's fine. Call the roll, please.
Reisig?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, we'll meet in your office, Lisa.
All right, need a motion, we'll move back into regular session at two forty-eight. I make a motion to leave executive session, move back into regular session at two forty-eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Reisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Based upon our executive session and to discuss personnel issues, and again, we certainly want to extend our very best to Angie Dillman, but in light of her, some health issues that she's going through right now, the board feels that we need to appoint some people into some positions in the assessor's office. And at this time, I'd like to offer Mark Luce, who's an employee with the state and involved with assessor duties and a state-certified assessor. We'd like to offer him as acting interim assessor in charge of the statutory assessor duties. And I'd also like to offer the name of Gene Bauer. She's also a state-certified assessor, to be the acting interim deputy assessor in charge of administrative and personnel in the assessor's office, and I would make that into a motion.
That is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The only discussion that I would add to that would be that for other department heads and other personnel that have ability to help, that we would take whatever help is necessary. And we would go through Mrs. Bauer, Gene, I always call you Gene, not Mrs. Bauer. I never called you Mrs. Bauer before. I don't know why I did that.
You're pretty official now, isn't it?
It is pretty official. But anybody that has, the, the personnel that have the ability to, to do what needs to be done, and I know that they are kind of spread out throughout the county, and we are in desperate need of that right now, right now. So we would welcome that. We would really, really welcome that, and we, we thank Gene for stepping up to the plate to help us with that piece of it. We thank Mark for helping us with that. The state is going to be bringing in one or two or three, whatever more. Mark's going to look at the situation to see what needs to happen, what work needs to be done, and, and to try to get things up to where, up to where it needs to be, get us through tax protests, and then keep things, keep things moving. So we appreciate everybody's effort. As they say, if you've got somebody, if anybody's wanting to help, we'll take it, but we want to go through Gene to do that, so that's my discussion. Anybody else have any discussion? If not, record your votes. No, we can't, never mind.
I need a sec. Did we have a second?
We have a motion in a second, we're in discussion. Call the roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Be in no other business, we are dismissed. Thank you.
I'm still interested to know who could file another over/under value report.
You mean as a group?
I think the assessor, and that's it.